Okay, good evening, everyone. This is Jim Ostrowski with the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy. I welcome you to our public hearing and meeting tonight on the Revere Dock LLC restoration plan at the collapsed site along Detroit River. Glad so many of you could join us today. Right now, we've got close to about 50 people on, expecting a few more slowly start to trickle in, I'm sure. Just a few things I want to go over in terms of housekeeping, because a lot of you, I'm sure, probably haven't participated in a hearing this way, and I appreciate your flexibility and willingness to join us for this way we're doing it. That's me. I'll be the moderator for tonight, and I'll want you to use a couple other staff here in just a moment as well. In terms of the housekeeping, if you noticed, all lines are muted, which at this time means that you can hear us, but we can't hear you. I'll explain a little bit later about how to unmute your lines and how we're going to deal with questions and answers and that in just a minute. Also, to let you know, we're recording the webinar, or according to the meeting itself, and we're going to be posting it to our YouTube channel as soon as we can get it up there. So you'll be seeing that up on our YouTube channel pretty soon. Now, also, you see in the handouts tab on your GoToWebinar toolbar, you go to the right of your screen, you open up your GoToWebinar toolbar, there's a handout, and the handout was for the presentation that's going to happen in just a little bit. So if you want a copy of that, you can download it, download it there under the handouts tab. All right, so, agenda for tonight, in terms of our public meeting, it's really broken into two halves. So, the first part of our meeting is going to be the information session, and that's a little bit more informal. What we're going to do is have a presentation by the consultant, PM Environmental, we're going to open up their line, and they're going to do a presentation, and then we'll spend some time doing some questions and answers, and that's your chance to ask some questions, if you have any, and we'll respond best as we can. We're to take that up till about 6:30, and then at about 6:30, we have to start the official hearing. The official hearing is a lot more formal, and during that time, I'll make sure I, you'll definitely know it's the hearing, because that's when you can submit your official comments. So during the first half, it's just questions and answer, informal. The second half is when we actually host the official hearing, where we take your comments for the record, and I will explain how to do that when we get to that point tonight as well. All right, so, a couple staff that are with me tonight from Water Resource Division, Andy Hartz and Jeremy Richardson, so I'll let them introduce themselves. Go ahead, Andy.
Welcome, everyone. Appreciate everybody's flexibility in joining us tonight. Unusual time, obviously, but we certainly want to hear what everybody has to say about this. I'm Andy Hartz, I'm supervisor of the Water Resources Division here in the Warren District Office, and with me today is Jeremy Richardson. Jeremy, you want to introduce yourself?
Hello, I'm the district rep for the Wayne County and Detroit area, or Warren District Office, Water Resource Division.
All right, great. Thanks, Andy and Jeremy, and so if you can vision like a live hearing, we host them, Andy and Jeremy will be the ones that will be up at the front table along with me. So, that's how we're going to do it. And Jeremy's also going to be my timekeeper later on, so you'll be hearing from him later. All right, so, in terms of how to ask questions tonight, for Q and A, just a little tutorial for you, if you've never used GoToWebinar before, it is a little bit cumbersome, I understand. First of all, if you want to type a question in, you can click the little question dropdown in your toolbar, and you type your question in, and you send it to us, and when we do the Q and A, we'll read those off, as many as we can get to. If you'd rather voice your question, you have a microphone, and you're not afraid to use it, just go ahead and raise your hand. So you click the little raise hand icon here, and that tells me that you got your hand raised, and I will call on you. And I'll call on your name, and I'll unmute your line so that you can talk. If your line is muted, you have to unmute yourself too, and you'll know that, because if your little icon here is green, it means you're unmuted. If it's red, it means you're muted, so don't worry, I'll remind you again if you forget. All right. So, in terms of how the meeting will work, during our Q and A session up to 6:30, if you have a question, just type question in there, or just type your question in, and we'll answer it. During the official comment part, we are going to watch you to type the word "comment" in. So make sure you write the word "comment," so we know that's an official comment. And just also to note, the question box isn't to be used as a chat, where you type, just type anything in there, you know, it's for official use, so official questions and comment. And, you know, tonight, this isn't the only way to make comments tonight. If you want to make a comment, you don't have to do it at the hearing tonight, you can also send your comments to My Waters, our website, it's listed here, and I'll mention it again, and I'll even send you out the link directly to it as well in just a minute. Also, you can email your comments to Andrew Hartz, so you have his email there, and I'll bring that up again later on as well. All right, so with that, I'm going to turn it over to our consultant this evening, Adam Patton. Adam, I just unmuted your line, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Okay, great, we can hear you, just a word, just a minute there. So, hold on, I'm going to bring your presentation up for us, and that should be your presentation, correct?
That is.
All right, you just tell me when to advance the slides, and I'll do that for you, okay?
Okay, that works.
All right, go ahead, then. Oops, I didn't get to the front of your, there you go, I get to the front of your presentation.
There we go. All right, well, thank you. Hello, everybody, I'm Adam Patton of PM Environmental. I am the consultant for Revere Dock, the environmental consultant for Revere Dock. I'm here to discuss, obviously, the planned restoration activities at the former Revere Copper and Brass site. You can advance the slide. All right. As an overview, the proposed activities will restore the riverbank following the November 2019 bank failure event. They will include construction of a new, state-of-the-art seawall constructed of steel, pipe, and sheet pilings that extend the full width of the property along the riverfront, and will be complete with a concrete cap. They'll also include removal and proper disposal of material present in the river as a result of the bank failure, and reconstruction of the Great Lakes Water Authority outfall to the river, which will be integrated within the seawall itself. You can advance the slide. A summary of current conditions, including the current dock structure. The current dock structure occupies the southern half of the property along the river. It dates back well over 50 years, and it looks like a seawall, but is really a timber pile-supported dock with a concrete apron and cap, meaning that the lower portion is exposed to the river, with the shoreline present beneath the concrete cap. Next slide. Onland conditions. The onland portion of the failure area is secured with a locked fence, and is largely covered with gravel surfacing, with a concrete Great Lakes Water Authority outfall present at the southern boundary of the area. An excavated pond is present from which gravel materials were recovered in December 2019 following the failure event. A gravel berm is also present at the southeast boundary of the excavated pond. The shoreline is equipped with erosion control blankets and erosion control socks, which prevent erosion. The area has been documented to be stable via geotechnical analysis and regular drone monitoring, and erosion and turbidity monitoring has been, excuse me, has documented that erosion controls are effective. Next slide. River conditions. Soil and debris, primarily concrete and asphalt, are present in the river as a result of the bank failure event. The area is surrounded by turbidity curtains, which act to contain turbidity potentially associated with the failure area. Floating cable buoys are present across the entire shoreline from north to south, which prevent access to the area via the river. Turbidity curtains are inspected daily, and the cable buoys are inspected weekly and maintained as needed. As indicated before, regular turbidity monitoring is also completed, with no elevated downstream turbidity levels identified. Next slide. All right, and now I'd like to talk about the new seawall construction. Materials and construction. The new seawall is a state-of-the-art design. It will be constructed of interlocking steel pipe and sheet piling, which will be driven from the surface to bedrock, which is present at an approximate depth of 95 feet. The seawall will be equipped with an anchoring system consisting of a series of pile-secured dead men and associated tiebacks that connect to the seawall. This design is a significant improvement over the current dock, that will ensure that the continued stability of the site and its productive use into the future. Next slide. As part of the seawall construction, the excavated pond area will be backfilled with gravel. The seawall will then be equipped with a concrete cap along the shoreline, which will provide a durable platform for site operations. Gravel surfacing will then be installed in areas west of the seawall's concrete cap. The Great Lakes Water Authority outfall will be reconstructed and integrated with the seawall, with all outfall functions retained. Environmental controls. All right, prior to any activity, a series of engineering controls and protocols will be implemented. These include installing onshore erosion controls and pile-supported turbidity curtains to 30 feet below the river surface to contain any turbidity that may result from construction. Automated turbidity monitoring stations will be installed at upstream and multiple downstream locations. From these turbidity record-keeping protocols will be implemented, as well as reporting protocols, which will be used to document compliance with environmental requirements. Contingency action triggers, including stopping work, have also been established to ensure compliance. Next slide. Material removal process. Additional sampling will be completed to further characterize nearshore materials for proper disposal prior to the removal. Material in the river will then be removed to an approximate depth of 27 feet below the river surface. This will result in the removal of soil and debris not present in the river prior to the failure event. It will also increase the depth of the river adjacent to the new seawall to accommodate its continued use. The removal activities will be conducted using a clamshell dredge, with all materials direct loaded to barges. The removed materials will then be disposed at the local Army Corps of Engineers disposal facility. All right, as part of the project planning process, the following order of operations will be followed to ensure the continued stability of the site and the riverbank during construction. These include securing all required permits, conducting nearshore sampling activities, and installing erosion and turbidity controls. Any debris immediately east of the existing dock will also be removed to facilitate the installation and construction of the seawall. The new seawall pilings will then be installed immediately east of the current dock, along with associated dead man anchors further west. Installing the seawall at this point will ensure that a wall is present that is locked into bedrock, such that subsequent activities can be conducted without any risk of land movement. After the seawall is in, the current dock structure will be removed in combination with the installation of associated tiebacks, backfilling activities, and construction of a concrete cap. Riverbank failure material and sediments will then be removed from the riverside and properly disposed. Subsequent to those activities, as-built documentation and a post-construction documentation of due care compliance report will also be prepared and submitted. Next slide. Oversight and regulatory compliance. The seawall construction and river material removal activities will be overseen and monitored by Revere Dock's environmental and engineering teams, as well as relevant regulatory agencies. Monitoring devices such as inclinometers and protocols such as turbidity monitoring will be utilized by those teams to document site stability and environmental compliance during construction. All activities will be conducted in close coordination and communication with local, state, and federal authorities, and in accordance with all required permits and regulations. Next slide. Estimated project schedule. Construction activities are expected to commence within roughly 30 days of joint permit application and restoration plan approval. The overall project duration is expected to be approximately six months. Post-construction submittals and reports will then be submitted within approximately 60 days following completion of the construction activities. Next slide. All right, we appreciate the opportunity to speak about the planned restoration activities, and thank you for your time. With that, I'll turn it back over.
All right, thanks, Adam, for your presentation. I'm going to bring the slides back to me here, so stand by, everyone. All right, so, we do have a few minutes to go through some questions. If you haven't, just a reminder, for those of you that joined a little bit late, this is starting out with the Q and A session after the presentation. At about 6:30, we're going to move to the official hearing, where you make your official comments. So now's the time to ask your questions, you have it. You can type in your questions using the question box you have there, or you can click the raise hand icon, and we will unmute you. So, um, okay, there you go. I'm going to go through and see who's got some questions here, and I will direct them towards Andy first. So it looks like we have someone with their hand raised here, Andy. Teresa Landrum, Teresa, I just unmuted your line, if you want to ask your question.
Okay. Good evening, gentlemen, and thank you for the presentation. My question goes to the timeline and the cost of the repair. What is the estimated timeline for the shoreline and the seawall to be rebuilt, and what is the cost?
Yeah, this is Andy. The timeline was just set forth by Adam at approximately six months, and I have, the department has no ideas to the cost, and I'm not sure that something, that's not something that's required that they disclose to us.
Well, the other question goes to, there will be no cost put onto the taxpayers, this all is Revere doing the repair and cost, incurring all costs, correct?
Yes, this is Andy, yes, at this point, yes.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Couple questions came in, coming into the question box. First question is, says, "It looks like all in-water material removal is located fully within the confines of Revere shoreline. What investigation has been done to assess the extent of in-water material? What is the level of certainty that no material has migrated downstream of the Revere property?"
Adam, can you speak to that? Please?
Oh, sorry. Yes, I can. Am I unmuted?
Yeah, you're unmuted, there you go.
Okay, thank you. All right, we've done extensive investigation at the site to characterize and document the extent of material in the riverfront as a result of the failure event. They included taking soundings using side stream sonar to document both pre-failure conditions as well as post-failure conditions. In other words, comparing those surveys to document elevation changes on the riverbottom. Based upon where that change occurred, sampling occurred using a sonic rig, and multiple core samples were taken throughout the entire area to document not only the horizontal extent of the material, but also to characterize it vertically. We believe we have a good handle on where the material is, and more specifically, what the material is that came or originated from the Revere site, as well as what was present prior to that from a sediment basis.
All right, thanks. Another question came in, question box, "How will runoff from rainstorms be handled on the reconstructed waterfront?"
Yeah, that's a good question. I'm not sure we know that. Adam, has there been a stormwater plan worked out?
Yes, a construction stormwater plan is being prepared and will be submitted as part of that soil erosion and sedimentation control permit. It will also be obtained as part of, you know, construction activities. Those will include the installation of various engineering controls, silt fencing, and other erosion controls, as well as during construction activities, they will be monitored and inspected by a certified stormwater inspector.
All right, thanks. Got a hand up here, Keith Matheny. Keith, I just unmuted your line, sir.
Yes, Adam mentioned that they've done a characterization, not only of the sediments that went into the river as a result of the collapse, but also sort of the legacy sediments in that area. Can he talk about, are they finding anything that might be a concern if it got stirred up in the process of what's being planned here?
Sure, and I will, I guess.
Yeah, Adam, can you?
I'm sorry.
Yep, go ahead.
Okay, I took the silence for it coming to me. We did characterize both the collapsed material, as people have been calling it here, and the sediments underlying. The entirety of really the Detroit River, along the entire riverfront, already has existing contamination in it, and we found that the contamination in sediment versus onsite is actually fairly similar. But you'll notice that part of the plan includes making sure that we're using turbidity controls in the form of turbidity curtains that extend down 30 feet, meaning that they will encompass the entire area, meaning horizontally, as well as the vertical depth of the proposed removal, such that any sediments, turbidity, et cetera, that may result from the construction activities will be contained within that turbidity curtain area. In addition to that, as I had mentioned during the presentation, turbidity monitoring is going to be conducted at the site, and automated turbidity monitoring stations have been or will be set up in upstream and downstream locations to be able to monitor and identify very quickly if there is an issue.
All right, thanks. Another person with their hand up, Gregory Ward. Gregory, I just unmuted you, you had to unmute yourself, you can ask your question. Gregory Ward.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
I've been told by a number of government officials that there is no sinkhole on the Revere Dock site, and instead, where the accumulated funky green water is near the river, it's merely a dug pond, and I believe the consultant said it was an excavated pond. So the question is, is, was that pond dug with a permit? And why hasn't it been pumped out and filled in? Because it does, the river does overflow into the pond, especially when the river is very high, and it seems like if you pumped out the water and filled it up, you can do better shoreline protection at the moment. And then the next question was, can you confirm that all material removed from the river will be disposed of at the Army Corps of Engineers site? Thank you.
Adam, this is Andy. Do you want to talk just briefly about the pond, and I guess you could address the disposal issue as well, I guess I could talk a little bit about that, too.
Okay, so the pond was excavated, the pond is not a sinkhole. It's difficult to elaborate or, you know, verbally, but in early December, all of the material, which was gravel, was excavated from that pond, and that activity actually relieved quite a bit of pressure off of the riverfront from a load-bearing sense. As it pertains to the water, just like everywhere adjacent to the Great Lakes, Lake St. Clair and the Detroit River, the water levels in the river are very high, and consequently, groundwater elevations are also high. Because groundwater is a function of nearby surface water and everything else, pumping out the pond area may not be feasible on a permanent basis, and we would prefer to, and things have been planned out in a way, such that we're doing things all at once. From a standpoint of disposal, all materials will be disposed at the Army Corps of Engineers facility.
Can I ask a follow-up?
Yeah, go ahead.
So on, you're saying that they dug out the pond and area, what was the necessity to dig it out? Before aggregate was put there, that was a level area. If aggregate was below the existing area before the stone was put in, something must have sunk down to make that happen. That's why it's really hard to understand how that's not a sinkhole.
Sure, sure, and I'd like to address that directly, and it may not necessarily be apparent unless you have a lot of photos, but we've done an exhaustive review of aerials, et cetera. Basically, a significant amount, a very large pile of gravel was stored immediately adjacent to the river. The weight of that material, combined with a very soft underlying clay, acted as a apparent slope failure, very similar to if you step in a mud puddle or in mud with your shoe, the weight of the gravel actually caused that hole by displacing the very soft clay, hence the presence of gravel deep within the clay as a result of putting the pile there.
And how is that not a sinkhole?
Because it was caused by weight from above, not a sinkhole, meaning a geologic issue underneath.
All right, thanks, we've got a lot of questions here, so I want to keep going with the questions. Another question that just came, that also came into the question box was, was an evaluation of the cause of the failure performed?
This is Andy, yes, it was. Adam, can you talk about that quickly?
Correct, I've actually, you know, summarized it to a certain degree, but a report was included in the restoration plan that specifically addressed the cause of the failure area, and the short answer to that was the storage and placement of a significant amount of gravel adjacent to the river, which resulted in a slope failure, really caused by the weight of the gravel immediately adjacent to the riverfront.
Thanks. We've got a few questions here, again, on who is paying for this, and did the company get fined?
Yeah, this is Andy, I can handle that. We're currently in discussions with Revere Dock LLC to incorporate the permit into a consent agreement. So the permit, if issued, would be incorporated into that consent agreement, consent agreement would have, you know, deadlines for performing the activity. We have no ideas to who's paying for it, other than the applicant's team. We have not granted money, we have not implied granting money, or loaned anyone money for this project, this is all being privately funded, our understanding.
Okay. And what chemicals are being monitored for at the site?
Yeah, this is Andy, I'm not sure they're doing an ongoing monitoring of chemicals. Adam, can you address that? I know they're doing ongoing monitoring of erosion and turbidity within the kind of the raw shoreline area, but I'm not sure there's ongoing chemical monitoring. Adam, can you speak to that?
You are correct. Ongoing monitoring right now includes daily and weekly inspections for erosion controls to ensure that erosion is not occurring, meaning the material that's on land stays on land, and the material that's in the water stays in the water. And we've had no evidence of increased or elevated turbidity at the site.
All right, next question, which US Army Corps of Engineers disposal facility will be used?
This is Andy, I'm presuming Point Muyer, as it's at the end of the river. I don't know, Adam, do you have any other idea or answer?
You're correct.
Yes.
All right. Couple people asked about the presentation, if we posted, and just to remind people that if you look under your handouts tab, you'll find a copy of the presentation there. I want to get through a couple of my comments before I go to the public hearing, because we really got to start the hearing in just a moment. A question, who did the company hire to do the work?
Adam, can you answer that?
We're in the process of evaluating bids right now, but we expect to have those secured very shortly.
And what work has been done thus far to clean debris out of the river? In the intermediate aftermath of the failure, there was work to recover some of the limestone, was that work permitted? Is it different than current plans to remove debris?
Adam, can you speak to what may or may not have been done in the river? It's my knowledge that nothing's been done in the river. I mean, we were worried about further collapse, and so that material actually sitting on the river bottom is somewhat protecting the soft material behind it, and that's why you see in the timeline being proposed, that first and foremost, the seawall gets constructed, because we don't, we... because we collectively agreed at Eagle that we didn't want that material removed till the shoreline was stabilized. Just worried about.
Correct. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Just worried about further losses.
Yeah, I second that. The material there is ensuring the stability of the area overall. Not to mention, we are not allowed to remove material, complete excavation, or other activities within the river without a permit, which is what we're seeking right now.
Okay, thanks. And we're going to go to one more question before we go to the hearing. And this is on, somebody raised their hand, Saro Shahrani. I just unmuted you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, cool. Hi, thank you guys for the presentation. I read in the proposal that there was a need to increase the depth of the river. I was wondering if you could speak to the environmental negative of increasing the depth of the river? And then my second question was, has there been an effort on Eagle's part to regulate and inspect other industrial sites on the river to make sure that something like this doesn't happen in the near or long-term future?
Yeah, I can address that. This is Andy. As it relates, let's answer the second part of that question. You know, Eagle and the Army Corps of Engineers are regulatory agencies that oversee the construction of structures within the river itself. We, as a part of the administration of those laws, Eagle does not have a regular inspection protocol or anything like what you're describing. However, the city is, either has passed an ordinance or is very close to passing an ordinance that's requiring engineering inspections of seawall properties. And I know they've already received many of those inspection reports. And presumably, that ordinance comes with some type of enforcement clause to fix seawalls. But Eagle does not have a role really in monitoring or otherwise keeping tabs of the structural integrity of the seawalls of the river. Can you tell again, say again, the first part of that question? I'm sorry.
I was saying, in the proposal, there was a part that talked about how the depth of the river would be increased placed the seawall. I was wondering the environmental consequences of making the river deeper.
Well, and that's something that we're worried about, primarily due to the sediment that's in the river. The bank collapse material is contaminated material. However, it's not contaminated as bad as the native sediment in the river immediately offshore of this property. We happen to know quite a bit about the native sediments in the river at this location due to both Eagle and EPA testing and monitoring of those sediments. So they will, I believe the proposal now is to get into some of those native sediments. And that is, that'll certainly be part of our review. I mean, the deepening of the river in itself isn't probably a huge ecological impact. It's how that activity is done. And that's why we're talking about this turbidity monitoring. And there may be some seasonal limitations on the dredging. You know, we still have to hear from DNR Fisheries Division. So that's a concern of ours, for sure.
Okay, thanks. One more quick question. I think it's a quick question. I wanted to make sure we got to. And was the pond digging a permitted activity?
Eagle did not issue a permit, nor have we issued a permit for the digging of the pond.
Okay. All right. Just to make sure we keep this whole thing on track, we are going to have to move on to the public hearing portion of tonight. I know there's a few questions we did not get to. But what I'm going to do is, we have a copy of all these questions. And I'm going to be sending them to our team here, Andy and Jeremy, so they can get back with you directly if they need to. It's a question that hasn't been answered. So I'm sorry about that, but I will be sending your questions on for them to address later. All right. So with that, I'm going to move to the next slide. And just like we said at the beginning, and I want to remind everybody that there is the copy of the handout for Adam's presentation in the handouts tab. So if you missed part of it, just go ahead and download. You can download a copy of his presentation. So with that, we're going to turn it over to Andy right now as our hearings officer. And he's going to read off the official hearing statement. Then I will remind everybody again on how to make an official comment during the hearing. So Andy, you there?
I'm all set.
Okay.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Andy Harts, and I'm the district supervisor in the Water Resources Division of the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy in the Warren Office. I will be serving as the hearings officer for the public hearing on Eagle submission number H N Z C F F R dash six Q M nine F, known here in the department as Revere Dock LLC. With me tonight is Jeremy Richardson, who's already introduced himself, and a big shout out to Jim Ostrowski for putting this whole thing together for us. Thank you, Jim. To describe how this is going to work tonight, I'll begin with some background information about why we're here tonight. I'll then describe the purpose of the hearing and how your comments will be used. By way of background information, the Water Resources Division is responsible for administering a variety of programs that help protect inland lakes and streams, wetlands, floodplains, sand dunes, and the Great Lakes. These programs regulate certain activities such as dredging or filling a lake, stream or wetland, constructing a dam, constructing a marina. The laws governing these responsibilities is the Natural Resource and Environmental Protection Act, 1994 Public Act 451 as amended, known as Act 451. We are here tonight because Mr. Steve Erickson of Revere Dock LLC has proposed the following activities. Remove materials deposited in the river as a result of the November 2019 riverbank failure. To restore the riverbank with a new approximate 600-foot-long steel seawall that will replace the existing pile-supported concrete dock present along the shoreline of the site. Installation of the new seawall will enhance the stability of the riverbank at the property, facilitate continued commercial use, and prevent recurrence of the November 2019 riverbank failure event. Removal of the riverbank failure material and sediment from the river, which will be properly disposed of and licensed facility, will also remove contaminated media sediment from the waterway, facilitate compliance with due care obligations for the property owner, and allow for continued enhanced use of the property, including vessels with a deeper draft than is currently supported. Construction sequencing, including installation of erosion, sedimentation, turbidity controls, installation of pipe and sheet shorting and failure material and sediment removal, has been proposed to minimize potential adverse impacts to regulated waters while facilitating restoration activities in compliance with local regulations. In order for a permit to be granted, Eagle must find that the proposed activities described in the public notice must meet certain criteria set forth by 301, Part 301, Inland Lakes and Streams of Act 451. In general, we must consider the effect of the proposed project on the river. When reviewing an application for permit under the provisions of Part 301, we are charged to make the following considerations as required under Section 30106 of Part 301. One, the department shall issue a permit if it finds that the structure or project will not adversely affect the public trust or riparian rights. Two, the department shall not grant a permit if the proposed project or structure will unlawfully impair or destroy any of the waters or other natural resources of the state. The purpose of tonight's hearing is to give anyone interested in Revere Dock LLC's project an opportunity to provide information that Eagle can use in making the decision whether or not to issue a permit. Please recognize that Eagle can only use the information you provide if it relates to the criteria that Eagle must use in making a decision. Some of you may simply want to express your support or opposition to the project. We'll be happy to make note of your position, but please understand that Eagle is, by law, not allowed to base our decision on whether or not there's widespread support or opposition to the project. I need to mention that the notice of this hearing was published in the Detroit Free Press and the Detroit News on Friday, June 5, 2020. As we discussed at the beginning of the informational session, if you have a comment to provide, click on the question box in your go-to webinar toolbar, then enter the word "comment" and enter your name. To ensure that the hearing is conducted in a fair manner, we'll follow these steps. First, the applicant, the consultant, has already had an opportunity to describe the project. That's already occurred. Then we will call upon those who have indicated in the comment box they'd like to speak in the general order that they were received. Jim tells me that he'll be going in the order that people were registered. As a reminder, if you're participating in this hearing via telephone only, you will only be able to provide comments during this hearing comment period. You may submit your comment to Eagle via My Waters, email, or US Mail. If you have written comments or materials that we'd like to present, please email them to me, upload them into the My Waters site, or send them to me via US Mail to the Warren District Office. When all the comments have been completed, we'll ask anyone else if they would like to make a statement. When your name is called, your microphone will be unmuted. As you begin your comments, please state your name and any group or association you may represent. Each person will be given five minutes to make their comments. I will indicate to you, I'm sorry, Jeremy will indicate you when you, Jeremy will come on and indicate to you when you have one minute left. Please begin wrapping up your comments and end within the allotted time. If need be, we will indicate when your time has ended. Jeremy's going to give everybody a one-minute warning and then a five-minute end-of-comment warning. And we ask that after that five minutes, that you wrap up comments, please. I ask that we all be courteous and respectful to one another tonight. Only one person should be speaking at a time. Please do not interrupt the speaker. And please also recognize that Eagle staff is here tonight to provide a fair opportunity for you to express your comments on the proposed project and listen to those comments. The hearing is being recorded, and your comments will be part of the information Eagle will consider in making its decision on whether or not to issue a permit on the proposed project. The public comment period for this issue is open for ten days from the date of this hearing. So the public comment period ends on June 26, 2020. That's ten calendar days from today. Additional information and comments submitted in writing during the ten-day comment period will be also considered in our decision. Additional information and comments may be submitted to me, Andrew Harts, via email, or to the Warren District Office, 277-00-DONALD-COURT-WARREN-MICHIGAN-48092-2793. Following the close of the public comment period, Eagle will make a decision to either issue a permit for the proposed project or with modifications, or send a letter of denial. You may find out what that decision is by checking the Eagle My Waters website at, this is a big, long thing. I'm going to read it. HTTPS colon front slash, front slash, MYWATERS.DEQ.State.MI.us, front slash MYWATERS, front slash pound sign, front slash external, front slash public notice, front slash search. And again, you're searching for the submission number, which is H N Z as in zero, C F F as in Frank, R dash six Q M as in Mary, nine F as in Frank. Thank you for your attention. We're going to start to call upon people who've indicated they wish to make a statement. Jim, let's hear from our first commenter.
All right. Thanks, Andy. I just got a couple more slides to remind people. So you've got your comment box, your question box. If you want to type an official comment in, say, write comment and then type it in. I won't be reading those off, but will officially, it'll be submitted for the comment. So if you want to type it in, you can do that. Again, if you want to ask your question, you can raise your hand. But I will tell you that we have several people who have already asked to make a comment through the registration process. And so what I'll be doing is looking at that and starting with that, going through the person that I guess registered first, just to be fair here, and calling your name off. And if I can, I know Andy read that email or that website dress off pretty fast. If we can, we'll try to shoot a copy of that out to everybody, a link directly.
I can go over that at the end, too, in the closing.
Yeah, okay. Sounds good. And Jeremy, are you ready there with your timers? Remember, you've got five minutes for each comment. And remember, we are not going to be responding back. This is just for comments. So Jeremy? Okay, great. All right, everybody. So give me some time, because what I have to do is, when I read your name off, I got to find your name, and I have to unmute you. So bear with me. I'm going to read off the person that's coming up first and then the on-deck person. So be ready if you're on deck. All right. So the first person indicated they want to make a comment was Jamasa Johnson-Grier. And then after Jamasa is going to be Simone Sagalak. So Jamasa, I'm going to unmute your line. Just give me a quick second here so I can find your name. Okay, you should be unmuted, so you can go ahead and make your comment. Are you there? Jamasa Johnson-Grier, your line is unmuted, so you can go ahead and make your comment. All right. That's no problem. We'll come back to you again. I'll make a little mark in my thing. Just might want to check your microphone to make sure it's the correct one. That's the problem with technology nowadays. So I'm going to go to my next person. It's Simone Sagalak. Hopefully, I'm pronouncing that correctly. Simone, it looks like there is nobody listed on my attendee list under that name. So I will go to my next name. And that's, let's see if this person's here, Valeria Epstein. And I do not see anyone on my attendee list by that name. So my next name is Mary Bowling. Mary, aha, you are there. So Mary Bowling, I just unmuted your line. If you want to make your comment, you can go ahead. Miss Bowling? I'll wait for just a second. All right. Miss Bowling, are you there? And just a reminder that for you to use your microphone, you might want to check under the audio tab and make sure it's got your correct microphone selected there. And so I'll come back to Miss Bowling in just a moment. Okay, next person on my list is Sam Riddle. So I'm going to check to see if Sam Riddle is in attendance. And I do not see a Sam Riddle. And just to let you know, what I'm doing here is when people that pre-registered for the hearing, they could check if they wanted to make a comment. And if they checked it, that's who I'm going from here. And it doesn't necessarily mean they're in attendance. So next person on my list is Nina Sancy. And it doesn't look like she is in attendance. Eventually, we're going to find somebody to make comment here. Okay, all right. Next one is Justin Anwenu. Justin, I know you are in attendance, but let me just find your name here. At least, I know I saw you earlier. There you are. You should be unmuted. You can unmute your line. And you there? Okay, we can hear you. Go ahead and make your comments, sir.
Great, thank you. I just wanted to mention two things. The first is, I really hope that Eagle will hold the company to their six-month timeline. You know, it's been a very long time since the November collapse. And, you know, six months feels like a very, very long time away. And I hope there will be accountability measures if that six-month deadline or timeline isn't reached, just because this has gone on for so long. And the second thing I was going to mention is that I also, you know, support the effort, obviously, to strengthen the wall and to clean this debris up. I hope that fines and fines that are not just a slap on the wrist will be attached to the permit request that we've heard today, you know, to serve as a discouragement for any future negligence from this company or other companies. So the first thing is the timeline. I hope that Eagle will keep the company to the timeline. And the second is that I hope the permit will be tied to a consent order that includes fines that are reasonable. Thank you.
Apologize for that. I have my line muted. All right. So thank you, sir. The next person that I have on my list here is Gregory Ward. Gregory Ward, I just unmuted. You go ahead.
Hi, on the comment of the timeline, I know on the Canadian side, there are restrictions of what time periods you can do in-water work because of fish habitat issues and such. And so when the timeline is established, I hope it takes that into consideration. I will also submit some written comment as well. So that will be it for me.
Okay, thank you. Next person I have on my list here is Douglas Wood. Douglas Wood, I do not see anyone by that name in attendance. And
Hey, Andy, this is Andy.
Yeah, go ahead, Andy.
Yeah. So what you're just, can you explain this to me? So you're seeing people that have registered, you're calling on people that have registered, but who aren't in the web, who aren't in the link right now.
Yeah, so what, yeah, so what I can see is that a person, when they register to attend this, they said they wanted to make a comment, but what looks like happened is that they did not, they're not here. So they're not in attendance. So I'm not seeing their names, so I can't call on them to mute them. I am going to go back to a couple of people here that had, I tried earlier, I'm going to try them again. Jamessa Johnson Greer.
Yeah, I'm Misa Johnson Greer. I'm here.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to offer comments on this. I feel like this process has been a long time coming and I think that I echo a lot of the sentiment that Justin and Wayne brought up earlier with the fact that this timeline has gone pretty long. We're thinking, we're looking at the reality that there's, we've had to deal with like a flooding season here and we don't understand or have any transparency around whether or not there's been testing of chemicals in the sediment that might have been stirred up and it sounds like that preliminary testing had been done, but we don't know if that's going to be ongoing. And so that's something that I wanted to raise up as well as the fact that this this company has acted in the past as a bad actor and I'm hoping that there will be adequate penalty for this particular incident. I'm hoping that what we'll see is a precedent that will continue to be set by Eagle in the state of Michigan, that that if you are acting in a way that is negligent and that puts the environment and that puts people at risk, that you will suffer some kind of consequence that's more than just a slap on the wrist. And so that's what I'm really hoping to raise up on today. I also want to acknowledge the fact that a lot of our community members who were so integral in even getting the kind of public public notoriety of this issue in the first place, they were so instrumental in raising this up on the public conscience that we're not and are not able to be here and make comment for themselves because they are instead caring for their families and are tied up with the reality that there's still such a great digital divide and that this process is not necessarily equitable to that. So with that, I'll leave it there.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I want to go back to the other person I tried earlier, Mary Bowling. Mary, I unmuted your line. Are you there?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can now. So go ahead.
Okay, great. I had to call in. The computer wasn't working. So Mary Bowling, I'm the Chair of the Detroit River Public Advisory Council, which is a public engagement tool for the cleanup of the Great Lakes area of concern. Detroit River is one of forty-three around the Great Lakes that was listed as an area of concern through the Great Lakes Water Quality Agreement. And in two thousand fourteen, we developed targets for removal of the loss of fish and wildlife habitat and degradation of fish and wildlife populations on the Detroit River. Since then, we have completed a fish spawning reef just offstream of the Fort Wayne property. And that fish spawning reef is in water. It requires clear water, no sedimentation in order to function at its fullest. And so we are concerned that there may be some sedimentation downstream in the area around and in the reef, the rocks. And so we would encourage an assessment of the reef, especially since the typical agencies that would do the survey work for us in the spring were prohibited from doing any of the spring surveys because of the COVID outbreak. And so we don't have an assessment of the reefs. We have pre-assessments, pre, you know, from previous years. So we definitely have something to compare that to. So we would like to see some further assessment and I'll be supplying more of a written comment as well. So I'll just stop there.
Okay, thank you. Okay, everyone, that's all the people that asked ahead of time to make a comment. Now, what I like to do is open it up and if someone else present tonight would like to make a comment, you can either type your comment into the question box and we'll submit that to our folks at W at Eagle here to put on the record. Or you can also click the raise hand icon. If you click the raise hand icon, I will find you and I'll unmute you so you can make your comments. So I'm not seeing anybody quite yet with their hand raised, but I'll give people some time. If for some reason you have, you think you have your hand raised, I'm not calling on you. I'm not ignoring you. Just type it into the question box. For some reason, it might not be popping up here. It should be, but sometimes people think their hand is raised and it's not. So just type it in there that you would like to make a comment verbally or you had your hand raised and I'll call on you. So you can do it that way. I'm going to hold it open here for a little while to see if anyone does have a comment. Or has their hand raised. Okay. This is one of the new things we're learning with the online public hearings is you want to make sure we give people plenty of time in case it's not coming through right away. We can make sure we give you a few moments. Think about it or instruct your comment and raise your hand. Okay, well, with that, I am not seeing anyone else with their hand up. I did get a couple of comments into the comment box, which I will share with Andy Hearts and his team to be a part of the record and that's perfectly fine. I remind people that there are other ways and before we close out, I'll remind people the other ways to make their comments. Andy, do you want to read off the that closing statements then again? And then what I'd like to do is at the very end, again, we can share where they can find the email address and everything. So I guess you can go ahead and do that.
Sure. Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight and being a part of this. We appreciate your interest in the proposed project and the time that you took to be here tonight. As indicated at the beginning of the hearing, you may submit additional written comments until close of business, June twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty. Following the close of the public comment period, we will consider all comments received to make a decision on the project. Just to remind those that may still want to submit a comment, comments could be submitted via the My Waters link, email to me here at eagle at H A R T Z A at Michigan dot gov. Or by US mail to the Eagle office in Warren. June twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty, close of the comment period, official hearing is now closed. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Andy. And I got on the screen a way you can access the information. People are asking about that. It's hard to get to. This is the way that I found it and I think it's easy. It's just HTTPS colon, forward slash, forward slash, My Waters dot D E Q dot S T A T E dot M I dot U S, then a forward slash. And then what you're going to do is in the search function, you can type in the application number and it's on the screen. But I'll read it off for those of you in case if you're on the phone and need to write this down. It's H N Z dash C F as in Frank, F as in Frank, R dash six Q M as in Michael, nine F as in Frank. That's the number you're use. And I think, no, I didn't have more slides. So Andy, do you have any more comments you'd like to make tonight?
No, I would just appreciate everybody bearing with us here as we try to be just as transparent as we can. We publish things in the newspaper. I've been talking to anybody that wishes to talk about this project. Anyone can email me anything they want and we continue the discussion on this file. Like I'd be happy to provide any material that people don't have. I will remind folks that on our website, we have a dedicated webpage to this issue and I should know exactly what this webpage is. But I think if you type in, if you go to Eagle and go to Google and type in Eagle Revere Dock, you'll find it. And if you can't find it, let me know. I am checking my desk phone as well daily, which is five eight six, seven, five, three, three, eight, six, seven. My emails there at the bottom and I'm happy to communicate with anyone that would like to communicate further on this issue. Thank you.
All right, great. Thanks, Andy. And I did put up the email again. I knew I had none of slides. That's your email address as well as the information about how to access them for all the documents related to tonight as well as the, under the handouts tab, remember, we do have the presentation. All right. I want to thank everybody for joining us tonight and hopefully you all have a great evening. I will be posting this on our YouTube channel as soon as we get it closed captioned. So you can expect to see that by the end of the week on our YouTube channel, the Eagle YouTube channel. Thanks, everybody, for joining us and have a great rest of your evening.
Thank you.